We just ask that everything done here today is pleasing to you. Lord, we just ask this special prayer, Lord, with all the sick and the hurting and the hunger and more especially, Lord, our military, Lord, we just ask a blessing upon all of those serving and not serving. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Kent Smith, would you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Angie Hearn.
Here.
Don Patton.
Here.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston.
Good job.
Lea Dye.
Here.
Norman Fraser.
Here.
Gary Burr.
Here.
Sunny Hall.
Here.
Phil Melton.
Here.
Doug Bickers.
Absolutely here.
Rochelle Hill.
Here.
Bill Keed. Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Darryl Hicks.
Here.
Ronnie Hopper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Ward Plan.
Here.
Have a forum. Please just line out. Number five, approve the agenda. Motion.
Motion.
Can I go? Kenneth Miller, second time. Do you understand the purposes? Any discussion?
I'd like to add that I'd like to pull number item of number 11, which is the girls softball contract that was brought to me by a few commissioners that we got the contract late and the Parks and Recreation Board actually did not get to have any review of that contract. So I feel like maybe it's a good courtesy and respectful to them that we maybe hold the renewal of that contract out one more month, let them properly discuss it and debate it, and then bring it back to you for approval next month. So I guess I'm asking for a motion possibly.
Motion.
David. Who's made the motion?
Motion. Motion. Die.
Make a motion. Second.
Sure.
Pull that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as a witness. We have a vote to find it. Take that down.
I have a motion to pull that agenda. That moves it back to approval of that.
Hold up. We've got a vote. Motion to amend the agenda. Yes or no?
Motion. Need a motion.
No.
No motion.
We've got a motion. Now we need a vote, a votes, vote call, voice call on if they approve to amend or not.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Lea Dye.
Yes.
Norman Fraser.
Yes.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Bickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Darryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Here. Yes. Motion. Need a motion.
No.
No motion.
We've got a motion. Now we need a vote, a votes, vote call, voice call on if they approve to amend or not.
Angie Hearn.
Yes.
Don Patton.
Yes.
Dana Ferguson.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rocky Preston.
Yes.
Lea Dye.
Yes.
Norman Fraser.
Yes.
Gary Burr.
Yes.
Sunny Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Doug Bickers.
Yes.
Rochelle Hill.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Darryl Hicks.
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper.
Yes.
Mary Powers.
Yes.
Ward Plan.
Here. Yes.
I made a motion to approve it.
As amended.
You made a motion.
Second.
Die.
Second.
What is that?
Any special?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes and noes. Boot is in the line item number six to Mr. State Representative Bruce Tripp, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Benton County Commission. If I may, it's my honor to represent all of you all. Would Carrie Arnold please come forward? Ms. Arnold is the Miss Volunteer Tennessee 2019. Everybody get ready. Ms. Arnold, as Miss Volunteer 2019, it's my honor and privilege to present to you a proclamation from the Tennessee House of Representatives, Inspector Cassidy and myself, congratulating on that, and best wishes for representing the state of Tennessee in 2019. Thank you so much. And in your duties, representing the state of Tennessee, it is also my distinct honor to present to you. This is the Tennessee State Flag, and this is well known with the capital of the state of Tennessee, while Governor Doolie has been the capital. And so it's good to take this around with you and take that where we go, representing the state of Tennessee, Miss Volunteer Tennessee. Thank you so much. And we're also happy for you. Thank you. Yeah, you want to say anything, please?
I just want to say thank you. I felt so much love and support from Benton County, and I'm really excited to get to go and represent Benton County because I love it so much and to know that I get to carry everyone with me throughout the year and come back and tell everyone a little bit about it so it's not.
And could we have the following folks come forward, please? Jordan Vick, Sarah Bradford, Isabella Pafford, Brianna Myer, Eden Pafford, and Brianna Harden.
It's Isabella Hodge.
Isabella Hodge.
Yes.
Thank you. And the coaches as well. Your coaches. Sarah.
Isabella.
Brianna.
Eden.
Ladies, just come forward and face the audience if you would, please. This is the 2019 Camden Volleyball Team. You guys should be so proud of them. They've done excellent for Benton County.
Now, a special presentation that Benton County would like to make on y'all's behalf. And the reason, we have a lot of sports teams in our counties, of course, we believe a lot of them excel, but a special group comes along ever so often, and we're recognizing these individuals not because you had a great senior year, you had a great four years, and those four years laid foundations for the future of the program. And all of you excelled, and so I felt like the reason this needs to be an exemplary moment is y'all are the future leaders of Benton County, not us, it's you. And so when you look at a team that excels the way they do, their expectations are already high expectations. They're not playing for second place. They're not playing to be mediocre, and they don't want to participate. They want to excel in everything they do. I think it was reflective by the way y'all attacked your schedule. I'd say your schedule is probably the hardest one in the state. Y'all came through with flying colors. You're going to continue to be great students, whatever your futures are lie ahead, whether it's college or whatever vocation, y'all have a DNA in you, the experiences that you've gone through in the last four years, that's going to make or break this community in the future. So I felt like honoring y'all for the four years that you put together, you represented your school, you represented Benton County, and hopefully you'll find Benton County as your permanent home, and you're going to make difference. You're going to make a positive difference in the county's future going forward. So I felt like they deserve a recognition unlike a pat on the back. So I have presented or had a plaque of your four-year accomplishments put together in one plaque, and Coach Vick will see that the schools erect this in the proper place so that everyone who walks into their doors are going to aspire to be better. Y'all have set a standard for people to strive for and to surpass. So your four years are special, they're special to Benton County, they're special to this leadership body, and I want to present this to Coach Vick for putting together a fine group of seniors and representatives of Benton County.
Carolyn, I have to say this, you girls working as a team, playing hard together but winning and sticking together as a team says so much because communities, believe it or not, have to stick together as a team, and we all have to work together results. You're going to have differences and so forth, but you all got to pull together for the team and for the community. So thank you all so much for that. Thank you, Chairman, and the Benton County District for letting me come here. Thank you.
Any comments? Chairman, good to meet you. Thank you. And most of the time in the citizen forum, I have lived here with James, Ricky. Go Speaker, please.
Okay, so I know Benton County, like, you know, it's small, it's not super huge, and you know, there's a little bunch who's been surrounding this, some right here, as he said, the youth is the future of this county, and without no youth here, we just keep, and I'm not trying to say that about what we keep, you know, reelect the same official or reelect the same school superintendent, whatever you want to call it, same principals, same teachers, you know, there's never a new face, there's never a new beginning. And you know, like I said, you know, I come from a very big place to a small place, and I feel like the future of Benton County could use a little small-town atmosphere, southern hospitality with a little big city. You know, we need to grow and we need to try to bring the people in, because if we don't have a youth, we don't have leadership. And you know, I have seen towns that just, I've done the research of towns in Tennessee that have went dormant from the 50s, 60s, you know, people just leave, people don't come back, businesses go. And in my opinion, the first step to making Benton County grow is to grow the development of people coming and building their homes here, people coming here and building their restaurants, their stores, and showing people a brighter side of things, because, you know, if you want to go eat at some restaurant that's outside of county, you've got to drive to Paris, you've got to drive over to Dixon, you know, and folks, you shouldn't have to drive that far to have a little family get-together, some family fun. And in my opinion, this county has a lot of potential, and with the right leadership and the right voices and the proper budget proposed or how you guys want to do things, in my opinion, it could be a great county. It could be a shining spotlight of Tennessee, because people could sit there and look at Benton County and see how much you've grown economically, how big you're getting, how the schools are growing. I mean, I get it's not Wilson County, it's not Davidson County, it's not some big county with a bunch of big businesses, but we have the opportunity to grow, and if we don't take the opportunity now, Benton County's never going to change. I understand a lot of people in this room love Benton County the way it is, and when new things come, people are interested. As I recall, I remember when the Burger King reopened, there was a, first week it was open, it was like a football game, people just wanted, and now they barely break even to keep employees working, because people got tired of it. So I propose that the budget you guys have may be a good one, but a property tax increase is not the answer to bringing people here or keeping the budget safe. Thank you.
Thank you. J.C. Johnson.
Good evening, and thank you all for allowing me to come here and represent Tennessee State Parks and Nathan Beverly Forest State Park.
Thank you.
As you know, the park tries to be very active in the community, and last year I came for four years and gave a presentation of some of the things that we had going on at the park and some of the things that we were aspiring to do in the future. And so the items that I bring before you tonight are a list of one year's progress. These are the things that we've accomplished at the park since my presentation here last year. So I'm going to go through, I didn't do an exhaustive list, but I sort of hit the highlights here, and then I'm going to tell you about some of the items that we have coming up that we'd like to accomplish in the next year. So some of the things that we accomplished this year were, we paved all of the sites in Happy Hollow Campground that were in disrepair, we marked the Swim Beach area at Eber Beach and expanded the beachfront there. The park received a capital project that was in excess of $500,000 for ADA improvements. These included ramps, parking spaces, and automated controls on all of our sinks and hand dryers, so that folks who need ADA access will have that at the park. All of our HBAC units have been converted and upgraded to 16-seer or better. We acquired 100-plus acres of land on the park, and we used that land to plant sorghum, and we're going to use that to interpret Benton County's agricultural history. I know sorghum was always a big cash crop here, so that's another thing that we're doing to sort of bring to light the history of Benton County. We're also going to use the other half of that land to develop a group camp so that larger groups will be able to come and use our facilities. We bought out the kayak and paddleboard rental station. That was something that was new last year. At the time, we were leasing space to a company called Paddle EZ. We've since bought out that operation and improved it so it made it more profitable for the park. We received the silver level award for the State Parks Go Green Initiative, which helps with sustainability projects, so we're moving up. Last year, we were in the bronze level, and this year, silver. There's an extensive list of requirements to move from one level to the next, so we've made great strides in our energy efficiency on the park this year, and we're able to move up. We upgraded our fleet of vehicles on the park, so the majority, vast majority of our vehicles are now new. We renovated both the group lodge and the park office this winter. Those were projects that my park maintenance staff took on themselves as opposed to bringing in an outside contractor, and they did an outstanding job, so it was something that I was impressed with, and it sort of really solidified the staff as a team on the park. I feel like we all learned what we're capable of in those projects. Recently, we added fiber optic internet with Wi-Fi and cable television options in our cabinets, so we got those through Benton County Cable and got away from Dish Network, who we had been using in the past. We updated the drapes and bedding in our cabinets. We've hosted a variety of fishing tournaments, including Tennessee Bass Nation and the Jump Fish Jamboree. We improved signage in key visitor areas throughout the park. We've expanded our gift shop operations with doing better merchandise. We've provided better mapping of our trail system, including digital maps. We launched the Healthy Parks, Healthy Person Initiative, in which we partnered with the extension office, our local schools, and other local parks. We began offering the Junior Ranger Program, and in that, we visit Camden Elementary School monthly and present programs to their second grade students, students that tie in with their curriculum. We've offered several new events, including our new Pickin' in the Park series. We've got an iteration of that coming up very soon, but that's for our local musicians. I know a big part of Benton County has always been bluegrass and folk music, and that's something that we're looking to continue through the series in the park. And most recently, we have joined the Tennessee Riverline Initiative, which some of you I'm sure have heard of, and the goal of that initiative is to improve river access throughout the county. Benton County was fortunate to be one of five counties selected for this, and I think you'll see continued improvement and growth through this initiative. So in the coming year, some of the things that we hope to accomplish on the park will be adding a network-based telephone system for improved reliability and call quality so we can better serve our customers. We will also add grant-funded cannon carriage for the barrels that we have on-site, as well as grant-funded historic photos in our cabinets. You'll see a return of oral history interviews being done throughout the community so that we can help to preserve Benton County's rich history. These will primarily focus on life along the river, which is the park's main interpretive theme, and it will tie in with the other projects and displays at the Tennessee River Folk Life Center. I think you'll see continued growth of the Tennessee Riverline Project this year, and you'll also see new and improved educational displays, both at the park office and throughout the park, in our kiosks that we have, providing public information for all of our guests. So I look forward to continuing to work with Benton County on these initiatives, and thank you all to the County Commission for your time and for your support.
Megan Norwood. That's what your name is, Sharon Neal.
I'm not sure if everybody knows me or not, but I am Sharon Neal, the director of the animal shelter. This is Megan Norwood. She is on the shelter board. She handles the sheriff's side, as I said, for the sheriff. Yes. We would just like to let you know that due to the commission refusing to fund an equal-time ACO, we have lost another one. We have been through three ACOS in 10 months. This frustrates me more than any of you could ever understand. We need a full-time ACO. In 11 months, we have 330 calls for an ACO, and some of these calls last two or more hours. Not only that, after he finishes that call, he has to come back and write a detailed report. We have an extremely dedicated ACO, and we have lost it due to funding and training. I am the one who takes these calls and deals with the community. I am the one who gets cussed out and told I do not care because I have no one to send out. When a child gets fit or a dog is injured and I have no one to send, the citizens take it out on me. You have put me in charge of this shelter to make it great. I've held up my end of this bargain. Please quit letting the animals down and the citizens of this town and fund a full-time ACO. Thank you.
Moving to line out of eight, Mr. Ford. Yes, ma'am. Go even.
Yeah, I'd like to report to Dabla Lane in Benton County. Yes. Now, the car gets free as of what you like. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the letters.
Hi, Hill, 5th District. I'd like to ask a question, my fellow commissioners. How many of you have received an invitation to the White House on this day? Okay, well, I'm going to represent our area. The Trump administration is having an outreach program, and each month, they have been reaching out to a different portion of the U.S., to smaller rural counties to come together and have a meeting and discuss the needs of those regions. Now, Tennessee, South Carolina, and North Carolina, I believe, are, the next one's scheduled for August the 8th, and I was invited to go, so I'm going. I was hoping there'd be more than just me going, but that's okay. You know, some of the concerns that I'm sure we would like to make Washington aware of, but I don't know everything, so if there's anything that someone would like me to add to the list, it's going to be a big meeting, but I'm sure they'll have something for us to fill out and put everything down that we want them to hear from us. My understanding is that we want to hear what the citizens would do want, and they also want to hear what we don't want from Washington. So please, if anyone gets a chance, just send me an email or text, whatever, I'll make a long list and take it with me, and I'm really excited to be going, and it's really nice to see Washington wanting to hear what we have to say.
Any further, if not, if not, any further?
What are we reading for? Budget?
We may, you can tell.
Commentary?
Yeah.
Commissioner, do you have a 2020 budget in progress?
We got a program.
Right up, it's good, then go back in on this.
The 2020 budget, which we're going to consider not as the same tax rate that we had last year, it's a fully funded budget, it goes into cash flow, but in general funds. We're trying to make allowances for future projects that are being discussed in, for Benton County. The budget represents about $15 million in compensation for employees, provides for the debt of the county, and other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to, yes, sir.
Is this budget going to tie us to a tax increase next year?
I don't know what the future holds, Commissioner, because I really don't know the future plans of the county. As of this day, debt is declining in Benton County. I mean, y'all are retiring over $1 million a year in debt, so I don't foresee it, but I don't know what your plans are either.
Let me ask you, Mayor, do you see us having to make a tax increase next year?
Well, I was going to say, we can debate that throughout the process, but no. The commission determines whether you want to fund the deficit or not, or fund it as is, the budget as is. If you fund the budget as presented, they're still at a $2.95 rate, that pretty much means there's absolutely no tax increase.
Can I further from the committee, go? But the plan is about, any more questions? Do you have any?
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Richards, you know, you talk about the youth and how it's important. I believe that's been the focus of this county government for the last 10 months. I'm kind of the new guy on the block as well, you know, come in, lots of energy, and I believe that the county commission has picked up the pace and really are starting to talk some issues that really address the future needs of Benton County, and that evolved around the youth. There's an old saying, I think, says like, when you forget all of your memories, you quit being old, and when you forget all your dreams, you quit being young. And I want us to dream for the future of Benton County. I want us to forever be young in this county and always look to the future of the youth and the needs of the youth and generations ahead. So I appreciate your comments. I welcome you back to future county commission meetings, and if you have an interest in being involved in county government where I can utilize you on committees, I'd be more happy to. You're exactly what I want to see, and like I said, you are the future of the county, not us. So talking about Nathan Beverly Forest, I think Mr. J.C. Johnsonius has done an excellent job. I think one advantage we have is having him as our park superintendent is the fact that he grew up nearby in Harrell County. He already had a familiarization with the park before he ever got appointed there. I think you have made a lot of difference with that park. I'm excited. I hope he stays forever, and as you know, he and I have been discussing multiple ideas and I guess you'd say future developments with that park. It's got unlimited potential. We're both going to meet with all of the state park erected.
Lose line out of eight. Mr. Ford. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Yeah, I'd like to report to Jaba Lane in Big Sandy. Yes. Now, the car gets free as of July. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the letters.
Hi, I'm Hill, Fifth District. I'd like to ask a question, my fellow commissioners. How many of you have received an invitation to the White House on this day? Okay, well, I'm going to represent our area. The Trump Administration is having an outreach program. And each month, they have been reaching out to a different portion of the US, to smaller rural counties to come together and have a meeting and discuss the needs of those regions. Now, Tennessee, South Carolina, and North Carolina, I believe, are, the next one is scheduled for August the eighth, and I was invited to go, so I'm going. I was hoping there'd be more than just me going, but that's okay. I do know some of the concerns that I'm sure we would like to make Washington aware of. But I don't know everything, so if there's anything that someone would like me to add to the list. It's gonna be a big meeting, but I'm sure they'll have something for us to fill out and put everything down that we want them to hear from us. My understanding is that we want to hear what the citizens would do want, and they also want to hear what we don't want from Washington. So please, if anyone gets a chance, just send me an email or text, whatever. I'll make a long list and take it with me. And I'm really excited to be going, and it's really nice to see Washington wanting to hear what we have to say.
Any further questions? If not, the plan is, the plan is...
What are we ready for? Budget?
We may...
Yeah. Commentary? Commissioner, do you have a 2020 budget in progress?
We got a program.
Thank you for the question.
The 2020 budget, which we're gonna consider not as the same tax rate that we had last year. It's a fully funded budget. It goes into cash flow, but in the general fund. We're trying to make allowances for future projects that are being discussed in Benton County. The budget represents about fifteen million dollars in compensation for employees. It provides for the debt of the county. And other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to... Yes, sir.
Is this budget gonna tie us to a tax increase next year?
I don't know what the future holds, Commissioner, because I really don't know the future plans of the county. As of this day, debt is declining in Benton County. I mean, y'all are retiring over a million dollars a year in debt. So I don't foresee it, but I don't know what your plans are either.
Let me ask you, Mayor, do you see us having to make a tax increase next year?
Well, I was gonna say, we can debate that throughout the process, but no. The Commission determines whether you want to fund the deficit or not, or fund it as is, the budget as is. If you fund the budget as presented, they're still at a $2.95 rate, that pretty much means there's absolutely no tax increase.
Any further from the committee, though? The plan is about to be more questions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Riddick, you know, you talk about the youth and how it's important. I believe that's been the focus of this county government for the last ten months. I'm kind of the new guy on the block as well, you know, come in, lots of energy. And I believe that the County Commission has picked up the pace and really are starting to talk some issues that really address the future needs of Benton County, and that were evolved around the youth. There's an old saying, I think, says like, when you forget all of your memories, you quit being old. And when you forget all your dreams, you quit being young. And I want us to dream for the future of Benton County. I want us to forever be young in this county and always look to the future of the youth and the needs of the youth and generations ahead. So I appreciate your comments. I welcome you back to future County Commission meetings. And if you have an interest in being involved in county government, where I can utilize you on committees, I'd be more happy to. You're exactly what I want to see. And like I said, you are the future of the county, not us. So talking about Nathan Beverford, I think Mr. J.C. Johnsonius has done an excellent job. I think one advantage we have is having him as our Park Superintendent is the fact that he grew up nearby in Carroll County. He already had a familiarization with the park before he ever got appointed there. I think you have made a lot of difference with that park. I'm excited. I hope he stays forever. And as you know, he and I have been discussing multiple ideas and I guess you'd say, future developments with that park. It's got unlimited potential. We're both gonna meet with all of the state park directors and regional directors here very soon to show them the park that we have. I might represent a committee, and anyone, Senator John Stevens, over to that discussion as well because to me, we already know we've got the greatest location, we've got the greatest park, and it offers our citizens and the people of Tennessee tremendous benefits. As to the animal shelter, you know, we have discussed this in depth. It's a very complex situation. Taking out the pound familiar money, we know that the animal shelter probably would not be operating as well as it has had it not had a few benefactors. It's a work in progress. I think if you ask me from the mayor's perspective, whether we need a full-time ACO over an animal shelter director, I believe we need a full-time animal shelter director first. Because if the shelter is out of whack, it doesn't really matter what kind of ACO we have. I mean, we're gonna have complete chaos. So the first thing was to stabilize that operation, and starting with an animal shelter director was that start. I do have an idea of that. We'll have to talk with Sheriff Christopher to see in years ahead how we might be able to work out a good partnership. And like I say, end up funding that position for the time I apologize. We were not able to do that this year. But we had to stick where the priorities were, and the priority is with the shelter first. And we will address the ACO aspect in the coming months going forward. Job of land, government doesn't move fast, but it moves. And Job of Land is what, about a twenty-year issue that we've had? But I will say that we have got at least a hundred Job of Lands across this county. So we can't just stop with Job of Land. We've got to begin as a body addressing some of the issues of the legal dons, of life. It impacts the quality of life. It impacts property values of our neighbors. So, you know, going forward, the Job of Lands are gonna continue. I've made a pledge and a commitment to address that issue, and I'm gonna keep moving forward. But I'm glad to hear that you did a progress report, and Job of Land is finally to your satisfaction with the people of Big Sandy and Northern Benton County. The White House, Commissioner Hill going to that summit that's going on. I know that, I hope that, I know that you're probably incurring these expenses on your personal pocketbook.
Yes, sir.
I would just remind the county that this budget allocates $200 per commissioner for an annual conference or training, travel. If you feel like you're not gonna use that over the coming year, I think it would be a nice gesture for the body to consider later on in the year, if you're not gonna use it, giving it up and maybe compensating yourself. Because you're representing Benton County as well and our concerns, and I think that maybe we could help you out on that, you know? I know I will personally, so see me after this is over before you leave, and I'll help you out with the expenses. The budget, like I said, we could talk about the budget for another three or four months if we wanted to. But one challenge that I want to present to the Budget Committee, being your first-year mayor, was that I just want to have her see the numbers. You know, whether it's good news or bad news, we need to know and have that confidence that what we put together in a budget is the most accurate reflection that we can make. It helps you make decisions for this county going forward. I'm not gonna say they're a hundred percent correct, but I believe we've made a lot of progress. And I'm very satisfied with all the work that the Budget did, Budget Committee did. And contrary to what, you know, rumor hearsay, I believe that every department head, whether it be at the schools, the highways, and the Sheriff's Department are probably very supportive of this budget. You don't always get what you want, you know? And you can't have it your way a hundred percent of the time. But this budget did address a lot of the, I guess you'd say, needs and operational needs of each department. And I believe it's a solid budget. Our finance advisor has done a great job over the last ten years positioning us to a healthy financial perspective. But again, budgets are year by year by year. And as we said in the briefing before, we still got some challenges down the road that we probably need to keep the discussions going forward. But for Commissioner Patkins, confidence. This budget, as presented, will have absolutely no tax increase. This budget, as presented, will have no tax increase. I yield the floor.
Any further? If not, lose line out of number nine. The approval of the minutes and the motion.
Motion.
Ten G, session of Mr. Dana. Any discussion? If not, lose out of script level, lose the twelve. I'm sorry. I didn't vote it on the record, but you two.
We have to vote on nine first.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
No dones, pass. Number ten, the quarter, the voting, you two, the motion.
Motion by her. Second bid, Dana.
Second bid, Dana. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
No dones, high spirit. Line out of twelve. Resolution making a corporation in various funds, departments, institutes, offices, and agencies of the Benton County, Tennessee for the year beginning July one, 2019, and ending June thirty, 2020. Motion.
Motion, Hill.
Motion, Commissioner, taking office, Aaron. Discussion?
It was approved by the budget.
Named by budget. No discussion?
Any word?
Okay, Chris Rock.
Every Commissioner here has the privilege of the right to challenge this budget. We take some to vote out. You vote against this budget tonight, we'll take it back to session, and we'll try to make it better. We'll try to improve it. I'm gonna remind everybody that I haven't forgotten that I voted against my first budget in protest, or I had a statement to make. I didn't think we were funding the recreation, the ball field. I didn't think we were funding the taxi line park. So I voted against the budget and made my statement. I've been really very dug in with this budget. And I've been asked a few questions, and I'm gonna try to explain why some of the things here was done. So we're gonna go. When we first started the budget, my first meeting was in early April. We were $670,000 underfunded in the general fund. I was told by some of you commissioners here, by some elected officials and others, I won't get too personal, that we were gonna have to have property taxes increased. I heard numbers that cost forty cents. We went to work. Yes, it's true. We took $30,000 from the highway. We took $100,000 from the school. We increased the dollar amount on property taxes. We decreased the delinquency number from seven to six, and that resulted in about $34,000. We took money out of debt service and moved it back into the general fund. So we shrunk that $670,000 underfunded general fund budget to $200,000. $200,000, $296. We could have kept working on it. We could have brought that down and balanced that. But we were assured that we have a legal budget, and so that's where we stopped at. It concerns me, and I hope to dig in more next year with the highway and the school. It concerns me that the highways underfunded a billion, what, $89,000? And the school, $741,000. I'm not here to argue with anybody. I'm just trying to give you my position on it. I think, and I hope to be very involved next year, more so than I was this year, I think that in the case of the highway and the school, that their income and revenues are underestimated and their expenses are overestimated. That's resulting in these very large underfunded budgets. But I'm going back and I'm looking at the audited numbers. Once the audited numbers come about, and the most recent audited number we have is 2018, the highway and the school's fund balance is growing. I'm gonna throw a few numbers at you. 2010, the highway, this is an audited number from the state, the highway had $1,207,000 cash available. In 2018, the last audited year, $2,790,000. They average increasing their fund balance, $96,834 a year for those nine years. The school did better. In 2010, and we want the school to have a heavy cushion in case there's an emergency or a last go-out, we want the school to be out. I understand the importance of the school being a part of the highway. In 2010, the school had, this is audited number, I'm not everybody, $2,369,000. In 2018, that number grew, $5,520,000. They average increasing their fund balance, $350,000, $181,000 a year. The general fund, we didn't grow that quick. The general fund, and I'm pretty sure 2010 was why money was spent on the new ACO, so I'm gonna leave 2010 off. From 2011 to 2018, the general fund grew $946,000. There's some here that's concerned about the highway department, and that's removing $30,000 from the highway fund. That came out of the Yaluca Taxes TDA pay. Between 2011 and 2017, the highway department averaged growing $15,998 a year. In 2018, if y'all remember in eighteen, the election year, we voted the gas tax increase. We didn't, General City, Nashville did. When that first year was effective, the highway department gained $328,976. Thirty thousand from them. The highway, from that new tax, they grew $328,000 in just one year. Now, I don't have audited numbers for nineteen and twenty, but I have our financial advisor's estimated numbers. His estimated numbers is $182,173 for nineteen, $182,000 for the 2000 year, 2020 year. And his estimates are usually more to my conservative. I'm not gonna throw too much more at you. And I'm certainly here to answer any questions. I hope I hadn't added to the confusion. You have the privilege to vote this budget down. If you do, we'll go back to session. And certainly, anything and everything you work, you're welcome. Unless I think there's something else to say, Chairman, I'm gonna yield the floor.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, I feel it's an obligation to my constituents to let them know how I feel about the budget. First, I wanna say that I'm glad that there's no tax increase here. That doesn't mean that I agree with everything in it. And second, I wanna thank the Budget Committee for their work. I know it was long, and you spent a lot of time on the movement, and I know it's hard work.
Thank you.
And I thank you for that. So my first concern is, of course, the school we just talked about. We're a small school district here, and we are behind other schools in funding. We're behind other schools in technology. We have other schools that provide their students with tablets to do their homework on. They're assigned tablets. They have a computer in every classroom. We don't. The students here have to share computers. That bothers me. Another concern is, now, when we take away money, we're also taking away things like sports. You know, taking away money could hurt the sports. It could hurt the teachers' pay. It could mean, you know, that we can lose teachers. And with all that, it affects the education of the children here. And I don't like that. I don't, you know, it's like you just said tonight. They are the future of us, and we're not the future they are. And the more that we have at the school for them, just like the volleyball team that was there for tonight, the success that they made, you know, that is good, you know? We don't need to do without things like that. And when you take away from the schools, it also takes away from that. So, I mean, you know, my major things that I focus on is the success of the students, for one. Providing more technology for them. I think we need funding for that. I think our teachers are underpaid. I see that we could raise the teachers' pay. And like I said, the athletic program, you know, we can't do without the athletic program. And so that's my concerns about the school. That's how I feel about it. I told them when I ran for office that I would support our school system, and I still do. That's just how I feel about all that. The highway department, yes, we talked about highway department. And yes, they gained a lot of money from the gasoline tax. But, you know, that doesn't mean that we have to take away from the highway department. They do need a cushion. We take away money and we have a disaster like we did in 2010. And a lot of that money, that was money spent on building bridges and repairing roads. We do need a cushion there. Um, let me see. I feel like Rocky read my notes.
You're better looking.
I asked Brock, what could that do, you know, what could the shortage of money do? He said, "Well, it could cause them to cut back on salt." Okay, we need salt, and we have that. Now, that's just one little thing that he said. But anyway, I don't like conducting business by estimating or overestimating revenue such as the severance tax. We put $30,000 extra dollars in there. We have no assurance that we're gonna get that extra $1,000, $30,000 there. You know, that's just playing with money. That's not for sure. The, I think, the waste management, I think we increased that, not much, but we're not, for sure, we could lose money with waste management. We could also lose money with severance tax. So I just feel like that when we put, when we overestimate, that's kind of risky business, and I don't like that. And that's my concerns.
Anybody wish to say?
Well, I have to agree with Roseanne. I don't like overestimating. The schools, that's one place that I see, and it doesn't take anything from them. We give the schools everything they want. As far as highway department, he does it on a five-year budget. I'm a five-year average. Let me rephrase that. And if you take $30,000 from him, put it in layman's terms. If you're working on your grade point average, and you come up with an F on something, which is basically what you've done, you've taken that away from them, he's not gonna make that up. It's a average, so we can't do that to them. And I'm just, there's a car in here that I totally against. Some of the other stuff that we put under nonprofits, I think that can go out of there and put it someplace else, or do it on a resolution, a separate one for each one. But, and that's my opinion.
Any further?
Commissioner Roseanne, Commissioner Dana, welcome your words. I politely disagree. I'm gonna remind everybody of one activity in the past, some of us was commissioners, some of us wasn't. The last property tax increase was in 2015. And we raised, that was a five-year reappraisal year. We raised property taxes 12 cents. That year, the school's cash fund balance was at $734,358 above what it took to operate the school that year. We raised property taxes 12 cents and overfunded the school's... We raised property taxes twelve cents and overfunded the school's seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The first year the property tax was active was in the two thousand and sixteen year. That year, they were five hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars above the cost of operating school. We want them to have them above the cost. The projection by our financial advisor for that same year was four hundred and seven thousand dollars underfunded. The year that we voted for the property tax increase, they were underfunded two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That's a difference of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um, everybody's got a choice to make. I encourage you, vote your heart, uh, the severance tax, or severance tax for the first time in two thousand and eighteen, broke a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Two thousand and nineteen, the first two quarters, this, this information coming from the department revenue. First two quarters of fiscal year wearing now, grew to six seventy-eight thousand dollars for severance tax. So the second half is as good as the first half, that's well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Chairman, I'm gonna yield the floor.
I have a question for you, Mr. Griffin. What, what do you foresee that's gonna run into severance tax thirty thousand dollars?
I have. I have this printout from the department of revenue. And it was a woman in the department of revenue giving me the numbers off of what was coming in, in, uh, severance tax. We also have one company in town that ain't paying severance tax and their books are being audited right now. Let's hope some deposit comes through that. But the numbers I'm using is from the department revenues, a woman named Amanda McGraw.
So that's really just a guess?
Everything in the budget's a guess. It's called an estimate. It really is, everything we do in this budget is an estimate. And if, uh, we, I say this to the commissioners, if we go back and we give the school their hundred thousand dollars and we give the highway their thirty thousand dollars back, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at a property tax increase and I don't want that. I agree with the new young man in town, we can afford it, our citizens are poor and broke and I have a great compassion for them. I'm gonna yield the floor.
Well, I, I have another question for you. I need to send forward that information, um, on the waste management, on the search charge, the host charge. I know there's an increase there. Is there not a possibility that we could lose money there? You know, we could not make as much money as we did last year because it's up to waste management where they direct their trucks. Say they do not direct their trucks in Abiden County, they direct them somewhere else. That could put us short. What would we do there?
Uh, Commissioner Roseanne, you're exactly right. Uh, we saw their dollars amount drop to, uh, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a few years ago. And I think last year's numbers was a little bit of seven hundred thousand and we're just, we're almost at seven hundred thousand now. Just a few dollars short. They're digging a new sale out there right now. They have a sale under construction, I don't leave them with that, they're running traction. And, uh, in two years, right now they're paying us a dollar twenty a ton, for every ton dumped in that waste management landfill. In two years, we're gonna get a twenty cent raise and build from a dollar twenty to a dollar forty. So I'm looking to see incoming, and, and I see where it can come from. I think there's fourteen years left on the contract, sorry, thirty-year contract. And at the end of thirteen years, don't mean that landfill's gonna shut down. That means they're gonna come back to the table and talk about another contract in four years. Any more questions?
Mr. Norton. Fraser, fifth district. I don't mean to come across as sarcastic. I come from, both my parents were educators. I've talked to Mr. Carter and I've talked to schools supervisor back there. I did have a question for you, if y'all don't mind. I mean, it's not saying I'm smart, but I don't mean it that way because I got a reason. Do we have any garage where we have to bring toilet paper to the school? No, we do not. Thank you. Now, where I'm coming from to that, I go to a church in another county. Churches collect in toilet paper for the school system. I don't ever want us to get in that situation, okay? So if we're not doing that, we're not doing too awful bad. It's not a real good thing. But I also notice that his building maintenance starting to have increased in this budget. And so we're not jeopardizing maintenance and we ain't having, sending kids to school, school with toilet paper. I yield the floor.
Ms. Hahn.
It was discussed with Mark Florence and Buck Carter about, um, they said they were willing to work with the county. They wanted to be known to work with our county. So they were, they were aware, we had discussions with them. It's not like we just took the money. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention that they were willing to work with the county.
Mr. Page.
I'd like to address the, the part about the nonprofits. We put the nonprofits in the budget so it wouldn't seem to the citizens of this county that we're trying to slip them in later. We're not trying to hide anything that we're giving, so if it's in the budget, everybody in the county knows it. You know, a more accurate budget is taking less out of the general fund throughout the year. That's the only way we can have an accurate budget. Put it in first and leave it like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kirk. Mr. Vick. Sorry.
I will speak very briefly regarding the animal control. I've made several unannounced visits out there. It's absolutely clean as a pen. It's a tremendous asset in Abiden County, more protected fast. The animals out there are extremely well taken care of. It's fresh water, it's fresh food, the walkway is clean, the office is clean, the bathroom is clean, even laundry is cleaning out there. Couldn't be run any better. We need to get things together regarding animal control officer. We've been through three people for the last twelve months. Ms. Neal's getting calls at two and three o'clock in the morning about stray dogs, all kinds of issues and problems. She shouldn't have to address that. We ought to be able to find the money to get things together and make it work. If mayor and the sheriff have to get together, send someone to Nashville, go through the training process, we need to find the funds to make that happen. And I'm calling both of them, sit down, work with this commission, let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Uh, yeah, I gotta say that a lot of times on the budget, it does not reflect one-time money. Uh, a lot of times the audited numbers will be different than your budgeted numbers because you don't know what you're gonna receive in the course of the year. And, uh, it's like this year, we're probably gonna anticipate, uh, roughly, I'd say, a hu- at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property sales. Today, we made thirty-five thousand on the sale of the industrial park. Uh, that was over market value, well over a minimum bid. Uh, but we'll have other sales like that. And, but that's a one-time ins- instance, so you don't necessarily budget that into your budgets. And so that's why a lot of times your audited numbers will be a, a little bit different than your budgeted numbers. The budget's based on an estimate, estimate, it's based on anticipation. I think one only has to look at the economy right now and say, we're probably gonna have a very good year. When it comes to this severance tax, I think all you have to do is look at the low, the, the number of gravel trucks running around the county is probably, uh, at, at, at an all-time high. So, so, but again, what goes up must come down sometime. And so it doesn't mean that simply because this budget was passed or will pass, that we can always rest that this budget is gonna be the same budget every year. We really do need to look ahead. Uh, waste management will run out one day. You know, whether it be twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years, uh, how are we gonna make up for that lost income? And again, that's what debate is about, that's what discussion's about, that's something. The budget process shouldn't be a three-month, four-month process. The bu- we should continually discuss this budget for twelve months. And we should always be taken in, into, uh, the foresight, the challenges that we believe we face ahead. So, uh, again, the budget as presented though, I believe, uh, you know, has several months of hard work behind it. The budget committee didn't just, just put numbers together, they really, uh, did their homework and came up with the most accurate projections possible.
Before we go to vote, anybody, any comments? If not, go call.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
No.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
No.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ryan Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Thirteen yes and four no.
Thank you, motion carries. That moves line item thirteen, resolution fixing the tax levy in Abiden County. Tennessee for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, that's two ninety-five. No votes?
Second by Hearn.
Any discussion, don't score the, go ahead.
I second.
No more discussion, I, I go call.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ros- Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Moves line item fourteen, resolution approving the contribution to nonprofit charitable organization with fiscal year beginning July one, twenty nineteen, ending July thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Motion.
Motion. Free speech, Mr. President.
Second, Hill.
Second, roll down Hill. Any discussion? No discussion, go call both.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
No.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Um, I would like to disclose that, um, I have a conflict here and, um, I don't sustain.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Moves line item fifteen, resolution to establish continued resale of land bought at the Leekman Tax Sale.
Motion.
Motion by purpose.
Second.
Second by.
Exactly.
Yes. Any discussion? No discussion, go call both.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Moves line item sixteen, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents in the yard to the twelve thousand USDA rule. Development grant application authorizing the mayor to administer the grant fund to prepare an application for funds through the rural development community by C L D grant.
Motion.
Have a motion.
Second by Hearn.
Second by, Ms. Hearn, any discussion? No discussion, go call both.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fur?
Yes.
Sonny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Bickers?
Yes.
Rochelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Daryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Line item seventeen, resolution asking a state lawmaker to examine the decrease in the Abiden County bank excise tax. Motion. Motion. Angie Patton? Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Griffin, I beg you to, after you're away from here, to pay attention to this resolution number six. I no longer, Department of Revenue don't wanna talk to me about this subject. Our bank excise tax has dropped from, uh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to fifty-nine thousand dollars. No longer will they take my phone calls. The last time we wrote a resolution, uh, concerning severance tax and asked Mr. Griffin to get us information on severance tax, I got a phone call two or three days later. And get information on severance tax that I've never given before. So let's hope this might be a stream, a stream of revenue that maybe once again someday we can receive. My understanding is, we have a bank in town, I won't be too personal, that you're claiming their earnings in this county and another county has been taken out of this county. That's, that being said, let's hope that Mr. Griffin can get to the bottom of the whole story. I mentioned a while ago, we have a, a company in this community, in this county, there were twenty IRM employees, twelve salary employees. They fill up seventy-five boss cards a day in a week and a hundred and fifteen tons and nobody's being paid for that severance. Now, I am being told by the Department of Revenue, before they quit talking to me, that their books will be audited. That's not in a resolution form, Mr. Griffin, but I, I beg you, please, if you can get some information, do so, please. I'm gonna yield the floor, Chairman.
Anybody else?
I appreciate y'all bringing, if I may address this, I appreciate y'all bringing this to my attention. I'll be happy to look at this and any, anything like this is sort of what, why y'all let me. Uh, I'll give it to the Department of Revenue and ask them to give you the information. I will, and I will tell you some of the, I've run into some, um, obstacles that, uh, they say, well, confidentiality, if it's taxpayer information, we can't release that information. I, I actually ran into that problem related to a state entity, a state park, trying to get with the tax grant, there's work on that. They said, we can't release that, it's just a flunk state legislature, sorry, we can't do it. So I, I'm gonna be probably proposing some legislation to get some more openness and transparency regarding, uh, state revenues and so forth. Even if they can't release specifically the taxpayer or taxpayer information, they ought certainly be able to answer us what the questions are related to why they're seeing such, such ECD benefit in drop. I would also say, I do know that they, uh, the haul income tax and they reduce excise tax, and I think they could have kicked in around two thousand and eighteen, but it sounds like you're talking more of a specific issue related to a specific banking institution. I'll be happy to look into that, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
State, obviously, we're hoping to make you view as well as, uh, Rick.
Well, under state law, they said that we can't release taxpayer information. And technically, under the law, even a state park or a state entity is a quote taxpayer by definition, so. But to me, and this doesn't justify for those tax registered ECD dollars, all that kinda stuff, theirs, uh, there is a legitimate need to keep that stuff confidential so it doesn't get out and ruin the deal. Or, you know, competitors use that information to get an advantage over other entities. But if we're talking about, I think there's certainly a, a line to be drawn. If state legislators don't have the information, how are we supposed to make informed decisions or judgments about what's the best approach? And so that's where I'm trying to, to hit at. And, uh, I want all my legislators to have, uh, sufficient information so we can make intelligent decisions regarding, uh, legislation.
So then with Commissioner, so then with law, can we get to Commissioner?
Yes. Major, I'm speaking.
I was just gonna say, as we said, the job of the government, sometimes it doesn't move too fast. Uh, the main thing is to get it to play. Uh, other things are chain of command issues, some, uh, by county mayor being representative of the county, there are things that I can request where they will talk to me, but they may not go directly back to a commissioner. So, you know, feel free to bring me into the discussion and I'll make whatever calls and emails I have to make as well.
So, you know, feel free to bring me to the discussion, and I'll make whatever calls and emails I haven't made as well, uh, that they may be able to be privy to decide to me that they couldn't, uh, to a general populace. Uh, but the main thing is, is, uh, what Commissioner Frasier does is, uh, the main thing is that we don't bring it to their attention in every one case. And so, I commend you for looking into these issues. Uh, it's not just this, this particular mental severance, the bank excise, it's other things. So, I appreciate your diligence in doing this, and I'll assist you in scanning for what's on.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. No? I have it.
Go call. This has to be a roll call.
I didn't know money was a spell, why you think, uh, go call.
That's a roll call.
I know it, she's making mistakes.
It's satisfied that Ms. Ferguson can do a roll call.
Well, do a roll call, but it, no, no way, so. Oh, I, I say that, and I think you just made it worse. I think that's how a roll call begins, you, my man. Go call, please.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Hicks?
Yes.
Ronnie Hawker?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Moves down line item eighteen, resolution approving the Abidin County Animal Shelter to be used as credit card reader in order to offer this payment options to the flood to adoption of feed, sales of material.
Motion.
Motion.
Second by Hill.
Second vote down, Hill. I'd be pissed up if you were, like...
That's okay.
Like you, alright. Any discussion?
Chair.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. The money collected using this credit card reader, will it go directly to the Abidin County's account? Or will it go into the animal shelters?
It will go into the general fund, just like any of the other, uh, collections that they have.
And then, was it approved by CTA for the comptroller?
Yeah. And, uh, we've gone through all the processes, it's approved by the Animal Shelter Board. I believe it went through property as well, so it's gone through the legislative hurdles. The main thing is that they've been instructed that you can only have an up charge. You cannot have any down charges, uh, as far as there might be, if there were, ever were fees. Uh, the purchase of the equipment, though, is through the data processing and communications. But once that's, uh, purchased, any transactions that goes through this particular contract will not be what you call it, to a negative, uh, a negative deficit to their property.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, it's close, everyone.
Why is it necessary to have two readers out there?
Because we live in a check card that world, you know? And they've had numerous opportunities for people to donate, but they don't have cash in their pocket, but they've got a check card.
Well, it says for two credit card readers, so a lot, two different...
Yeah, and Ms. Neal may be able to, uh, explain why they need two. I don't know if two come with a minimal order set, or if they need, uh, maybe an ACO, uh, who might be out traveling, might have that opportunity as well. But I imagine they'll have one fixed at the shelter, and then maybe one that's mobile.
Any votes? If not, go call.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Plea Die?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Doug Vickers?